Okay, good evening everyone and welcome to the town board meeting of the town of Newcastle. It's January twenty eighth, twenty twenty five. Uh the board has been in executive session and I would like to ask for a motion to open the public session with first uh our work session.
So.
So second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Aye. Aye. Okay, so we are going to start off with uh Jill Shapiro who's gonna give us the quarterly project update.
Okay, thank you. We'll just switch. Um um interestingly um we started with FEMA projects and I don't quite know what to say about them. Um as Jeremy suggested uh maybe we should categorize it as the agency formerly known as FEMA. Um so Upper Mickle Dam uh the pedestrian bridge replacement, Byer Lake Road culvert replacement and the Shether Road uh slope stabilization and stormwater improvements are all projects where we received initial FEMA funding. Um there was to be an opportunity for us to apply for additional FEMA funding to make up the rest of the cost of the projects. I don't know where that stands right now in all fairness. So um it seems odd to me to continue to talk about these when we just don't know what the funding is but um yeah, that's that's where we are. Um the pedestrian bridge replacement and um Shether Road we have gone out for um to actually start the projects and awards the bids. We're in the midst of uh um um exercising our due diligence on both those projects and we're hoping that uh by next board meeting, oh you are the best, thank you.
Yeah, it's a little hard to see.
It was a little hard to see.
For some of us.
Even with the glasses. Um anyway uh for those two projects uh as I said we we're in the midst of doing our due diligence and we're hoping that by next town board meeting that we will have um an award to be able to recommend to you. Um.
Jill, can I ask as to future funding, do you have any numbers? I mean, I see some numbers for the pedestrian bridge um.
So the pedestrian bridge, I can tell you right now that uh FEMA awarded us you know just over one million dollars. The project is over twice that. Um and so it's going to be a while. Uh um so.
So we need at least another million, but by the time we get to it, it will probably be.
Right, no, I it's it's gonna be another million in 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 change and I I at at a minimum. Uh and before the current FEMA s- situation, um we were going to be in a position to um apply for additional funding and we had been assured that we would receive it. I don't know what those assurances are worth at this point. I don't know if I would rely upon them. Um the projects have to get done. Um this is damage from storm Aseia. Yeah. Um and uh we have a closed pedestrian walkway. It's gotta be restored. So when we'll be doing these projects, we hope that FEMA funding will become available and the promises that were made to us will be kept but um you know, it's a day by day sort of situation. So that's where we are with those. I I wish I had better news for you on that, but.
Okay, well we'll wait till the next quarter?
Yeah, and hopefully things will settle down a bit.
Yep.
Um the next um yeah, okay. The next we'll pause um set of projects are water infrastructure projects. Um and we can start with the North Bedford Road pump station. Um at this point, we awarded the contract um back in May of uh twenty fourteen. Um the uh submittals were approved um by the Department of Health and we're waiting. We have a long um lead time for electrical equipment. This is the replacement of uh the pump set station. So we're just waiting on them. Um and uh that project continues. The trenchless water main is the replacement of the aging water main under the Metro North Railroad and Sawmill Parkway. Um we have been able to complete two of the boreings. One additional boring is located between the northbound and the southbound tracks. Um that requires a separate um excavator and permitting from Metro North Railroad and we're waiting on our contractor to proceed. Um we've got ongoing ru- uh schedule of replacement of water mains um for Dunbow, Winwood, Park Drive off of Douglas, Spring Road, Market Place. Um and construction um is to be determined on those. That's probably the next set that we've been doing. Um we have um cement lining on certain uh water mains. We are gonna be able to um we need to be able to go out and issue an RFP. That's actually the next project up for us. Um over the past year, we took and replaced um the water mains on Meadow, Pine Cliff, Ridge and Alden. Uh the new water main um replacements uh were completed in fall of twenty twenty four. The roads were repaved, uh Pine Cliff Ridge and Meadow, Alden um we actually installed that new water main ourselves. Um and Alden and Winthrop have been repaved and we're just waiting uh just paperwork on the Department of Health final approvals. Um we've got the Millwood Water Treatment Plant. There's a heating oil tank replacement project. We're trying to get rid of old uh individual tanks and we've got a bug spray on. So we're we need to issue an RFP on that for a consultant. Um.
Jill, what's the timing on the RFP?
Uh for that I have to ask part, but I think it's in the next couple of months. Um the Quaker Road um water main uh replacement project. So um this is actually it's on two places on our current projects because we're working in conjunction with um with the county. So hold off on that for two seconds and I'll be right there with it. Um the other infrastructure projects, we've got the Millwood Water Treatment Plant, the generator replacement. We're waiting on the delivery of a manual transfer switch to complete the project. Everything else is done. Uh the roof has been completed. Um we um we have completed the generator fuel tank replacement for the Millwood Water Treatment Plant for that um um generator. Uh the final payments um to Pepito were released last meeting. Um we re- released the retinage and we've closed out the project. Uh the Chapel Quah Performing Arts Center, this was a hundred and twenty five thousand dollar um SAM grant from care of Assemblyman Verdict. That project is complete. The solar installation, um we have gone out to bid on for the solar design um and um installation. Um that was issued and we hope to be awarding it within the next month. Um the um auditorium fixtures, the interior um auditorium ceiling fixtures uh are will be converted all to LED dimmable. Um um our uh in-house electrician Dan Rabino is gonna be starting that project first week in February. Um February sixth to March fourteenth, um Chapack is gonna be uh closed so that we can take and um actually get that work done. We're very excited about it. And that was uh care of a hundred thousand dollar grant from Senator Harkam. We thank him very much for that. Um also at Chapack, um we completed um drainage improvements, um a new gas line, um and the um parking lot and walkway improvements. Um and the curbing have been completed. Um the last piece are the handrails for the ADA um compliant ramp and we're completing that in-house. Um Getney Park was completed. Millwood Park um work was awarded to S and P Consultants. We did work on the playground. We installed an ADA compliant path to the playground. That too has been completed and we're waiting on the installation of the handrails.
Did you get to that surround of the playground?
That that yes.
It was in in disrepair and it was unfortunate because everything so you know new and and then that.
Yes. Everything was missing. The um the path has not been put in at that point and then we they were waiting for all the heavy equip- equipment to leave the area before they took and restored that.
Okay. Great, okay.
Um let's see. Uh next is our chap line. Um as the board is aware, we had received a five hundred thousand dollar CSC uh grant back in uh twenty twenty two um and finally received our five million dollar tap grant um earlier this year. Um we are.
Does that comes from the feds to the state?
Yeah, but it's through transportation. So that that money I believe has been dispersed.
It has.
Yeah, there was there was more than a little bit of angst going around the office this morning going where is that? Yeah, right. Um backhaul truck. Um so uh we finally received three hundred and twenty five thousand dollar grant, water quality improvement grant um for the bag truck that placed for approximately fifty percent of it. Um on the agenda this evening is a draft letter to Esther Hudson requesting the balance of um Esther Hudson funds um to pay the remainder.
Yeah, this is so important. I I just wanna really thank the staff and and Sabrina.
I don't know. Well, you don't have to bring her, but thank you. Appreciate the breaking.
Yeah.
Nothing else.
Uh oh, okay. I I think I don't I don't think he's chiming into this.
Could you take a slide?
But she's.
If you want.
But it's not a perfect timing though, right?
It was. I thought he was thanking someone. Uh.
Oh, you're on.
And you you yourself.
I'm on.
Alright. Yeah, I I I just wanna thanks Sabrina and and everyone else because it's been a you know, it's it's just been such a long haul to get to get to this back truck, which is expensive and we want to you know, we wanna cooperate with Esther Hudson and 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 the state. Stormwater um you know, it's very stringent requirements, but it's for a good cause. Um but municipalities really need help. These are expensive, expensive projects, so.
Um next off is a a proposed uh one twenty sidewalk extension to the south entrance of Wagon Road Camp. Um we were trying to do this in conjunction with the uh county um extension of their sewer uh main of one twenty and also the town was piggybacking onto that with a water project. Uh we were replacing a water main at the same time. Um unfortunately, we were not able to resolve the rock crossings. Um the presence of a number of village homes on both sides of the street just too close to the road prevented us from being able to install a sidewalk. So um we have the feasibility study. If something changes in the future, we can always take and revisit it, but at this point, we had to hit pause on this.
Yeah, I think it's hard for people to visualize and understand. Sometimes we cannot do a sidewalk. In this case, we would have to take in people's driveways. Literally, there was no room. And um you know, difficult curves where you would have to cross a dangerous street to continue the sidewalk.
Snowshells. You don't have the space for this proper snowshell.
So there are and um yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, we really want to build sidewalks, so um there are a lot of impediments to it.
Yeah.
Um okay, um I'm just gonna jump around a little bit because I realize that um the next one is it projects within Newcastle, but they're DOT. Um let's see. Um we've got um proposed sewer service at Amsterdam Park. Um uh the um the projects is gonna be done this coming year, so we should keep an eye out for that. Um it's on the engineering list of things to do. Um we're going with uh town hall parking lot improvements. Um we're gonna be working with the garden club um to uh to beautify a little bit of the front of town hall while we're um figuring out exactly uh when the the wholesale improvements will be done. Um let's see. Uh we have um a feasibility study for um one thirty three between uh the North County Trailhead and Getney Park. Um we actually have a complete streets um study that we do, let me see, two to three years ago, right in the midst of COVID. Um trying to take and connect um the sidewalk in Millwood uh with Getney Park, which we think would just be fabulous. Um and uh engineering will be working on that this year. They're also gonna be working on the feasibility study for an RFP for the sidewalk on the east side of Bedford Road, um one seventeen between the north side of Salem Road and the south side of the mobile gas station. Um the fire um department is actually uh required to put in a crosswalk between the mobile station and the firehouse as part of their improvements. And so we're gonna try to take and coordinate some of our efforts with theirs. Um and then we've just got some odd and then things, a water main replacement extension along a portion of farms and right through. Um recycling, um parks garage, we've got some building repairs. Um we've got a boiler replacement project at CPAC um and town hall roofing repairs. Um the next page has to do with a number of current projects that are gonna be affecting Newcastle, actually taking place in Newcastle, but they're not affecting us. The first one has to do with uh New York City DOT. Um as the board is aware, we completed in October of twenty twenty three that first of the replacement culverts. There are additional culverts that have to be replaced. Um there's one along um one seventeen by Old House Lane. Um the proposed construction for that is gonna be twenty twenty five or twenty twenty six. We just had a meeting with the state about that. And there is another culvert um at the Sawmill Parkway entrance between Quaker Road um between Quaker Road Bridge and the Horace Greeley statue. And that's actually gonna require um a couple of weekend closures of that entrance of the Sawmill Parkway. But again, um anticipated for either twenty twenty five or twenty twenty six. And there'll be far more information coming um to you about that. Um county projects also in the same general area. We've got the relief sewer on John Corwin Way. Um it received Department of Health approval, but they have not gone out to bid yet. Um we're very concerned about that project and we're watching it closely because we have another project. Um the extension of the county trunk along one twenty where the town is also uh piggybacking and replacing that water main. Um we wanna make sure that the projects are staggered so that they don't overlap with the relief sewer. It's just too much construction in a very small area. Um the um the federal government projects, um we did we were allotted two point six million dollars for engineering and environmental permits for elimination of the grade crossing and flooring between Sawmill Parkway. We're hopeful that that will continue. Um.
I I just wanna clarify that that's not going to be technically a town project.
Oh, that is not at all a town project. That's that is the federal government.
Yeah.
Um the federal government and the US DOT. Um and so we're hopeful that those funds will not be interrupted. Um again, we will have a seat at the table when these projects are discussed and planned and we have had uh input on um the state and Westchester County projects thus far. Um I don't know how much input the federal government is gonna take from us when we're doing this, but at least this is the engineering studies at this point. So that's gonna take a little bit. So there won't be boots on the ground here. Anyway, um are there any other? I know we're running a little bit late. I tried to speak talk as best I could. Um are there any other questions? Otherwise, I'm happy to clarify anything. Otherwise, we can go through quite a few uh administrative items.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate the update. Okay, thank you, Jill.
Alright. We have retroactive payment and claims for checks dated January seventeenth and January twenty fourth, twenty twenty five. We've got authorization to award bid for the Chapack solar project. Due to the uh one vendor that actually meets the state qualifications. We've got authorization to enter into agreement with Chapel Quah Central School District for the use of facilities for our twenty twenty five summer camp. It's gonna be at Boring Brook School. Uh authorization to rent um a bathroom station trailer for twenty twenty five summer camp. We're hoping this will be the last year that we have to do a trailer because we're gonna be installing a sewer out at Amsterdam. Um we've got authorization to solicit bids for twenty twenty five uh camp bus transportation services. Authorization to purchase an unlimited used vehicle. Authorization to close capital projects for twenty thirteen and twenty fourteen IT equipment upgrades. Authorization to close a capital project for DPW track wash, truck wash facility project as well as DPW facility fuel dispensing system purchase. Um authorization to approve a letter to the Westchester County regarding the funds for the vacuum truck. That's the Esther Hudson funds we spoke about. Authorization to use town property. That's the road. Authorization to approve uh the twenty twenty five to twenty twenty seven um CAI uh tax mapping contract for the Assessor. Um authorization to accept vehicle auction results from DPW. Authorization to enter into consent and release regarding the plan and uh authorization to approve stormwater maintenance and replacement equipment for the project. Any questions?
Questions, Jill?
Yep.
Jill, okay. Thank you, Jill.
Alright.
Some self-explanatory. Um okay, so may I have a motion to adjourn the work session and open the town board meeting?
Some would.
Second.
Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we're now officially at our town board meeting. Uh we have a few public hearings, but before that, um Jill, are there any announcements?
Um yeah, I do have a couple, if that's okay.
Okay.
Um twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five school taxes are due Friday, January thirty first. That's this Friday. Excuse me, the tax office will be open from seven AM to seven PM. Um I do wanna note that this will be the last school tax collection that our tax office is going to be open those extended hours. We have a drop box down at um the first floor of town hall, right inside the police station um where you can drop your tax check twenty-four seven. Um it will close at seven o'clock on uh the thirty first. Uh we have an online payment system that allows you to pay up to eleven fifty nine on the thirty first. Please don't test the system.
Hmm.
Um it really does work, but it it um you know, not everybody's clock is is exactly the same. Um so let's call like by eleven thirty, you know, if you could manage to make the last payment, that would be good.
Or today.
Or today? Really, today? Thank you. Thank you so much. Alright.
It's a reminder for himself.
You wouldn't know, but would would not know. Um so just to remind people that that um your entire tax bill is actually due on September first. You get a thirty day grace period for the first half and a four month grace period for the second half. That means that when you are a a day, and I'm gonna put that in quotes, late, so you pay it on February first, it's four months late.
Hmm.
And that's why your penalty is ten percent. Think about your ten tax bill. Think about ten percent. Please put your tax in the mail. Watch see them stamp it, put it in the lockbox downstairs, bring it into town hall. Um we'll hold it for you till till Friday. Um um and if you have any questions, uh please call the tax office on nine one four two three eight four seven seven three or email us at taxes@mynewcastle-nw.gov. Okay. Um summer camp registration, this Saturday, February first at nine thirty. Um if you haven't already gone online to set up an account prior to Saturday and you intend to register for summer camp, um there's gonna be uh in in Thursday's e-newsletter, um there's a link here. But you need to set up the account to facilitate your registration. So if you have any questions, just call the rec office. They'll talk you through it. It's two three eight thirty nine oh nine. Um and again, there's a there's a link. It'll be in the administrators report on Thursday e-newsletter.
Jill, can I just clarify for one second?
Sure.
Even if you already have an account, we've changed systems. So if you think you're good because you already have a Parks and Rec account, you're not. You have to create a new one. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you so much, Ally. That's absolutely hmm a thousand percent. Yes, thank you.
Yep.
I will clarify this in there as well. Um and last but not least, um we have paid internship, paid summer internship opportunities. Um the Millwood Water Treatment Plant insured internships, that's the Mike Martis internship. There are two of them. Um they carry stipends between forty eight hundred and seventy two hundred dollars uh funded by uh Feolia and they take uh one resident of Newcastle, one resident of the Village of Pleasantville. These are for engineering students. Um the full details of those internships will be listed in my administrators report. We also have Town of Newcastle internships, which is a two thousand dollar stipend for six weeks. Um if you have uh if you're a Newcastle resident and you've completed one year of college, you're eligible to apply for these six six week paid internships. Um our engineering department is looking for assistance with stormwater reporting requirements. Our planning department is looking for assistance with projects and our town clerk and receiver of taxes um also looking for help. So um do you know any college students who are not sure what they wanna do for the summer? Please um ask them to apply. We built a town.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
And they can get information on how to apply online?
Yes.
Okay.
Be right in my report.
Is that it?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Okay. Alright, and uh for the supervisors report, I just wanna mention a few things. I wanna remind everyone that there is a special election coming up to fill the unexpired term for the Westchester County Executive Position. George Latimer is now happily serving the sixteenth U S Congressional District. So Election Day is February eleventh. Early voting begins Saturday, February first through Sunday, February ninth. Um and I urge everyone to go on the Westchester County Board of Election website to find um you know lo- uh your polling locations. Um secondly, I want to announce that or remind everyone, the MLK Junior Program, which was previous previously scheduled for January nineteenth and was snowed out, has been rescheduled for this Sunday, February second. It will be at a different location. It will be at Chapack. Um the uh the Committee for Inclusion and Belonging is sponsoring this with the Chapel Quah Library. It will feature uh the documentary Following Harry, which was a uh featured at the twenty twenty four Tribeca Film Festival. It's uh regarding Barry uh Harry Belafonte, who was a civil rights pioneer and had a relationship with MLK Junior. There will be a panel discussion with the film director Suzanne Rostock. We will have the the Bronx Bethany Church Choir singing. They are a beautiful, wonderful choir. And we'll have a live artist, Paulie Nassar. Um I've been pleased to be the liaison to this with Jen Klein. Jen, is there anything that I'm forgetting about this event?
The snacks.
Yes, okay. I knew I missed something. Thank you. Um I also want to remind everyone that a wonderful Lunar New Year celebration will be happening um at Chapack on Saturday, February first. Um actually Lunar New Year begins on Wednesday, January twenty ninth, uh I'm sorry, January twenty ninth, twenty twenty five. It's the Year of the Snake. It is a significant holiday for the Asian American community and it's um about adaptability, renewal and innovation. And we could all use uh some of those uh you know, great, great um um features, you know, for for our town and our work here. Um this will be sponsored by the library and the Town of Newcastle. And it will be Saturday, February first at three thirty PM at Chapack. And finally, we have a birthday message request. And I wanna wish a happy first birthday to Madison, May ten, May ten. And her birthday will be Saturday, February first. So happy birthday, Madison.
Happy first birthday.
First birthday is always so exciting, especially for the parents. Um so that's all I have for the supervisors report for now. Jill, do you have anything further for the town administrators report?
No, that's it.
Okay. Um let's see. So now we have public comment, new business. This is not for the public hearings. We have on the agenda, this is uh general public comments. So if there's anyone in the audience who'd like to make a public comment, please come up to the microphone. Uh yes, okay. And please state your name and um where you reside.
Greetings, I'm Victoria Alzepia, at sixty-five seven Bridges Road. Um I wasn't planning to mention this, but I heard today that Martin Wilbur uh is resigning from his salary and they're closing down their paper uh position. Yeah, very soon. So I just wanted to acknowledge him. And I just, I've been in this room with him so many times. He's covered the ward, the town so well. He's such an amazing journalist and that's gonna be really a true loss for everyone. So I just wanted to give a shout out to him.
Yeah, thank you for mentioning that, Victoria. I did yeah post up on Facebook. So no.
Victoria.
Is he is he resign? Is he resigning or is it just going virtual?
What's going on is that
I think not in print.
Today was the last print um issue.
Right.
And um I believe they said they were they're continuing online. So I do hope that's the case and I hope that Martin will still be um well, I I think they'll announce their final plans um soon. But hopefully they will continue an online presence.
Martin is such a gentleman.
Really is, yeah.
Great loss, even in paper, even if that uh transitions online.
I love watching him.
Phenomenal person, phenomenal.
Shorthanded.
I love it. I love it.
Yeah. It's such an important public service and local news is really crucial to our communities. It really helps people to understand
Indeed.
issues close to home and not so close to home. Really helps people to understand issues close to home and not so close to home and um. What what our elections are about, what are, you know, what issues face all of our communities and the policies that we pass locally. Um, so it's uh, I don't know what can replace that if we lose it. Yeah. There's a hand raised online. Okay, um, uh, anyone making a comment online? I see one hand raised, I see uh, Frank. I'm sorry, Cooper, Frank Cooper. And remember, this is public comment, not for the public hearings on the agenda, but general public comments on other matters.
Thank you, uh, my, my name is Frank Cooper and I'm interested party uh, of the property located at two twenty-two thirty Joan Corwin Way. Uh, which the township is considering uh, eminent domain action. Um, as I understand things, the township is proposing to create a non-conforming subdivision of the property. Essentially keeping the vast majority of the lower portion and parcelling off the upper portion. Which only contains a driveway, a drive lane, and the cell tower at the top. One of our concerns is that due to the subdivision and the use of the lower portion of the property by the DPW. Utilizing heavy trucks and equipment, that there could be a risk. Uh, that the upper portion, which essentially sits atop a rock ledge. Could become unstable over time due to continuous use of heavy trucks and other equipment. Thereby gen, potentially generating vibrations which could cause the upper lot to become unstable over time. As an interested party in the estate, we're concerned that this could pose a safety hazard and are interested in knowing. Or recommending that the township engage the services of an engineer to assess this safety concern. And to propose recommendations for safety uh, well into the future. Since this is an estate, we're obliged legally to dispense with the property. And we wanna be assured that current and future property owners are not at financial risk and that citizens are not at safety risks. Due to the actions of the township of subdividing this property. Additionally, uh, the township is essentially creating an accessway or set another way, a street to provide access to the property above containing the cell tower. In our opinion, the cell tower at the top should be thought of as an individual lot and the proposed access way. Of the proposed property should be considered a street. As we understand tax legislation, streets within the township are considered non-taxable entities. And streets are ma- maintained generally by the DPW. Today, we have not been apprised of any actions or presentation from the township regarding. The construction of a two-way street along with the typical improper road improvements to make this new street safe and conforming. This has not been an issue for the current property owner as access is controlled. As we have line of sight to prevent two vehicles from utilizing the accessway or street simultaneously. All that said, we're requesting a revised tax assessment for the upper lot containing the cell tower only. And the area shown as a roadway, roadway or a street on the property to be considered a street, as streets are non-taxable entities. It seems to us unfair that we are currently paying approximately twenty-seven thousand in total taxes for the entire property. And the proposed new tax rate for what is essentially a very small usable lot above. And a street to be assessed twenty-two thousand in taxes. Which in essence is almost double the current taxes for the entire property. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comments. And we will take them under advisement, thank you. Uh, anyone else for public comment online?
No other hands.
Okay, no other hands are raised, so now we can, we will move on to our public hearings. Okay, may I have a motion to open a public hearing on amendments to, of the property maintenance local law?
Some would.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, who would like to start and introduce that?
I, I can introduce it, yeah, this is a continuation, I believe, of the property maintenance, this is the first time.
No, this is the first time, yes.
So first time on tonight, so this is a simple amendment to chapter ninety-three, the property maintenance law. Uh, really all we're doing here is putting in uh, language. That protects our first responders EMS when they go to a home. We're asking that the curtilage around the house and any ingress, egress windows and doors be free and clear of any shrubs, brush. That would, you know, prevent our first responders fire from entering the home, so. That's what this does, quite simply, and again, I'll just, you'll see in the local law. The underlying portion is what we added to the, to the paragraph section ninety-three dash two C and D. And I'll just read you, you know, any obstructions or hazards. This again, it takes two steps, walks, driveways, egress, windows and doors. And we add language that need to ensure safe passage to occupants, emergency medical services, police and fire personnel. And we define the curtilage around the homes to be fifteen feet, fifteen per perimeter around the principal structure. Again, this is something that was brought to our attention with respect to the safety, and that's why we're thinking about amending this local law. And I worked with Dennis early on this, and this is the language that we both came up with that we think does the trick.
Okay.
What, what is that, in, in practical sense, what, all, everything has to be moved away within fifteen?
If you have a window that you can exit, or a door, yeah, you can't have that, that, that blocked, okay?
What, what does that mean?
Means that you can't have a shrub growing, and if you are able to.
Directly in front of it?
Directly in front of it, directly in front.
To the side of it that encumbers it a little bit?
Really, you can't have it blocked. Okay, so if it's a, if it's a window, a doorway, or a, a separate door to a basement, you really can't have it blocked by shrubs. Or any, any, any type of, you know, shrubs that would block it, you can't, you can't.
I'm not trying to bust chops, you can open up, as long as you can open up your door, that's okay, as long as the window can open, that's okay?
It's gotta be, it's gotta be able to provide safe access, so they gotta be able to get in there without any obstruction.
Any ingress window though, not every, not.
We're getting every window, right now, just correct.
The window that holds down, she can get in and out in emergency, or, or the door itself.
Some basements have, you know, by state fire code, you have that window you can actually get out of, not just in order, in case of a fire. So, that window cannot be blocked by any shrubs or any type of brush that's gonna prohibit that.
Within fifteen feet?
Yes.
So what if, I'm gonna bust chops for a second, um, on your non-conforming lot, like my house, for example, my backyard, my spots is probably four feet deep. Before it goes on my side, is like a hundred feet deep. So if there was a window there, it can never, it, it, it's, my neighbor's property has shrubs.
Right.
That are out of my control, then how does that work?
Are you, yeah, that's, but is it an ingress?
I'm just saying, I'm just kidding, it's hypothetical, you had it, egress there, like a window that folded down, how, how would you deal with that? If it's the property line is on, in your neighbor's wooded area?
So you'd be, you're, you would assume that, that your property is right up against that home?
Yeah, it's like small, I just happen to have, using my house as an example, because I have a lot that is a hundred feet deep on one side, but there's parts that are five feet deep.
Right, well, you gotta do the best you can with respect to your property getting the shrub clear, uh, on yours property. You can't really control what your neighbor's doing, but to the extent that you can provide safe access on your own property, that's what this talks about.
Okay, and, and we had further changes as well, right, in the second paragraph?
Yep, second paragraph, correct, eh, and I'll just. Will be added in paragraph T, and I'll just read the entire language, and I'll tell you what we underline. So in residential districts, the curtilage, and this is what we added, which is defined as up to fifteen feet of perimeter of the principal structure. That was not, curtilage was not defined before, so we put in fifteen foot. Which shall be maintained free from uncultivated vegetation in excess of ten inches, such as grasses, brush and briars, but excluding trees. Shrubs and other cultivated plants, such as flower and pollinator gardens. And then this is the language we added, prob- this is, I'll defer to Dennis on this one, propagules or plants germinated from garden grown stock as well as. Naturally recruited from wild populations and grown or cared for in a controlled environment.
The, the point was to, to be clear that this did not preclude, um.
Pollinator gardens, right.
Pollinator gardens and native, native plantings, native gardens.
Correct. That's right.
So, yeah, thank you Dennis for that. And because that was a question when this law was first, um, passed. Okay. Does anyone on the board have any, any questions on this? Okay, so we will open up uh, the public hearing, and anyone here in person would like to make a comment? Come on up. You'll have to identify yourself again.
Okay, hi. Um, so and Dennis, we wanna chime in with something about this if you'd like. So, the conservation board talked about this at our December meeting. And I believe I forwarded it along, um, our, our verbiage that we suggested. So, we spent a lot of interesting thoughtful time about this language and, um. We really kind of parsed through it, and there were so many specifications around, you know, possibly grasses, possibly pollinator plants. And what we really, you know, came to feel is that. Maybe there should be some overarching language around environmental, supporting the environment, supporting conservation. Because there are some, you know, they're all different types of plants. And they're all different sized plants that can be beneficial, they may or may not be propagated, so I know there's some really creative language that you just read. About, you know, whether it's cultivated, whether it's propagated, so. We wanted to kind of capture everything, um, in kind of a broader brush, so that we didn't leave anything out. And so that it also respectfully left Tom some room to kind of be subjective in what he was seeing. But as long as it was either, you know, what we call volunteer plants, maybe there's a native plant that pops up naturally. That, you know, no one put there, no one thought about moving it there, but it has a, an environmental benefit. So the language we came up with, if you recall this. Um, and by the way, we're totally supportive of all the safety measure pieces, those are great, so thank you for explaining that again. Um, so where we have the language change, I don't know if you've actually seen this language, but I'll share it, but you can always put it in writing again. Um, so in residential districts, the curtilage defined as up to fifteen feet of the perimeter of the principal structure. Shall be maintained free from vegetation in excess of ten inches, okay. And then, the language we put is excluding cultivated or otherwise naturally recruited volunteer plants. That are growing or contributing in a manner with intent to promote conservation. So, very overarching, um, doesn't leave room for kind of if we missed anything or if there was a misinterpretation. So, that's where we netted out after thinking this through. Um, and hopefully, the spirit, the intention is still there. Um, Tom, have you seen the, this proposed language that we kind of, um, shared with the board previously?
Good evening, board, yes, we have read that a while ago. Eh, with advice of counsel, the rewritten version is now proposed to the board.
Okay, so this is pretty new, Tom, from the, um, December meeting, did you see, this is like not from years ago.
Dennis, do you wanna speak to this, because you have more knowledge of this?
Yeah, I think we would want to hear from Dennis because we took hi- his language.
Yeah, I could just.
As, as covering.
Worked at a speaks, I think part, part of the issue too was, I mean, because I, I know I've read some of that language. It's also about enforceability too, because Dennis is gonna have to be the one that's gonna go out and enforce it. So I can't have it overly broad or, or too narrow, I have to have some happy medium. And that's why Dennis is the one coming to be enforcing it, so. The language that I think is proposed in here is something that Dennis and, and, and his team can, can enforce. Well, I'm not sure if, if what you have there is something that's enforceable, because I think it's a little bit too broad. Again, I, I understand what you're trying to say, but I think from a purely legal aspect of it, in terms of forcibility. He's gotta be able to go out and, and read this and enforce it in terms of, and, because when, when people do violate and it goes to justice court. I can't have any real ambiguity there as the, as, as to this issue, that's why, and Dennis, I'd be happy if you wanted to chime in on that.
I, I think you, uh, summed it up, you know, in fact, to, to, to be fair. Um, when you and I were working on it, uh, the point I was trying to make was to sort of create. Um, almost like a slight, for lack of a better term, vagary, because, you know, this, this does have a latitude. Uh, at least, you know, from my experience and my eye. Uh, so I was, you know, sort of happy with what, what we got to. And then, when I remembered, to be fair, sitting in the conservation board meeting, and they had asked me, you know, what, what, what do you think of what we, uh, worked up? I said, you know, from my perspective, and my perspective is obviously not as an attorney. I said, I think you created it such that it's even a little more vague, which I said would maybe be to an advantage to someone like myself. Who's going to look at something and make a determination, but then to what your point was. If you have to carry that to the next level of actually enforcement. Then, yes, my, you know, added, um, pleasure, excuse me, preference of vagary. Is not going to help in that situation in any way, shape or form, so I understand sort of the, having to cut this down the middle, you know, or the mediation of, of this. So, you know, I'm, I'm comfortable with, you know, what's proposed with respect to the task that, you know, the town would expect me to have to, um, fulfill. It needed to go to enforcement.
Okay, so what I would say is that, um, we would want another pass at it. In other words, we were so happy with what we came up with, because we felt like it really was all inclusive and didn't leave anything out. So now that it's gonna be, you know, kind of specifically enumerating a lot of these pieces, I would want to. Just sit with the conservation board again, and just make sure and with Dennis present. To kind of say, like, is there any final ruling that we would suggest? So is this the only final public hearing, or will there be another one?
We can keep it open.
Okay.
We can, we can certainly keep it open, um.
Yeah, you, you can.
I mean, there are different, different interests at work, obviously, you know, you have the conservation interest and we have the, um. You know, the interest of enforcement of a local law. And, um, you know, there's the aspirational aspects and the practical aspects of having to. Um, parse through language and, and know how to proceed. And, uh, so there's a concern of, you know, what Dennis would probably grasp with, uh, selective enforcement if something is very vague. So there are a lot of different interests at work here.
First and foremost, as we stated earlier, it's really, it's, it's a public safety welfare kind of legislation, right? Safety is first and foremost in this legislation, that's why we did it, so. That's the first, that's, for in terms of priority, that's number one. And then it comes in terms of enforceability in the language. That's why I worked with Dennis to see, okay, what can you enforce when you go out there that takes priority and safety first, number one. And then two, in terms of enforcement, so. Happy to look at, if you want to have something proposed, if the board's gonna incline to keep it open, we're happy to discuss and see what changes that you may have.
Yeah, I was gonna ask, and like the legis- I'm sure you've kind of looked at this, the legislative history. Around this law is, as you said, the safety piece and really kind of the ghost property piece. Um, so the, you know, the conservation piece kind of intersects there with people who are now doing a lot of rewilding. Native planting that doesn't look as traditional, um, as kind of, you know, you know, very, very manicured properties. But is very beneficial, um, to the environment and even the ecosystem, so. We're trying to kind of help find that balance there. So, just on a process level, I appreciate you offering to kind of go through it, so. Is there a way so that we can make the best use of the board's time, that perhaps if we come up with language that we can communicate directly with you?
So, uh, what I would suggest in terms of timing, the board, we can keep the public hearing open, and if you wanna keep it open to the next, whatever the next meeting is.
Sure.
And then, whatever comments you have, I would, hopefully you get those prior to that meeting, so we have a chance to digest it, work it. And then, we would have to continue this to the next town board meeting.
Then, then we'd be February eleventh, I just wanna just bring up a little bit of past history in that. You, you thought this was a continuation, because we've been trying to approve this.
That's why I said it.
At the request of our first responders for months while we were waiting for the conservation board.
Oh, we weren't aware that anyone was waiting, we, we actually turned it around and within a seventy-two hour period.
Right, I think maybe there was a problem with, with scheduling and things like that.
Okay, yeah, because we just heard in December that you wanted our feedback and we did it within three days, so, just so you know. We really wanted to respect it, and we turned it around really quickly, so we had no idea that you were waiting for anything, just so you know.
Okay.
Okay, that does matter, it's fine, it's fine.
And, but in, in terms of changes, in terms of process, because, you know, we have to publish this, it's a local law, so if it's gonna change, it has to be published and noted again, so. What I would recommend, if you're gonna get us comments, I would get them to me as soon as possible, like early next week if you can.
We're meeting Monday then.
So if, after Monday, get it to me, because if it does change, I'm, we're gonna have to republish it for the notice, because it's gonna change, so. Need to give the public enough time and notice for the February eleventh meeting to do that, so.
And it may be fine, I just want the board to look at the current language, that's all.
So, to be clearly known, it would have to be a different public hearing.
Right, because you.
We would be restarting.
Restarting, I mean, you can.
So we would then close this one.
No, you don't close it, you can leave it open, because the law can change, I just wanna put it on, so when we get to the public hearing for February eleventh, I wanna make sure the public has enough notice of the.
Of the new page.
Possible change, right.
Right, okay.
That's why, and it's not a zoning law, so it doesn't need a GML review, so. Sooner I get, if I get early next week by like Tuesday, then I can, if it, if it's something that the board can agree to. We, I could revise it and put it on the agenda for February eleventh, anytime.
Sounds good.
So you continue this public hearing, because that's the whole point of it.
I think we're almost there.
Okay, thank you, Victoria, thank you. Okay, anyone else?
Can you just, I just, yeah.
Yeah, anyone else for a public comment on this public hearing? Um, anyone online? Okay, so I'd like. Oh.
Hi, this is Paul Iden, the, the chief of the Chappagel Fire Department, the chief Santone senses regrets. Um, I just wanna point out two things from the first responder perspective. Any additional. Preventions we can put in place to make it safer for firefighters, EMS, police officers. To egress a building through an emergency window? Or to bring a victim or someone out of an emergency window would definitely be greatly appreciated. And just from a distance perspective, I think the fifteen foot that's been proposed is quite reasonable. The US Forestry Service recommends thirty feet from a, um, to keep vegetation away from a wildfire prevention perspective. We've all seen the devastation, not just in California, but what we were witnessing in R and Dracula and Putnam Counties. Um, so I think it's definitely something that needs to be taken into account while appreciating the conservation aspect of it. I think we also have to view the safety and protection of the structures themselves and the residences. And I think fifteen feet is a very reasonable accommodation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, chief. Okay, anyone else for comment? Now, okay, so I'd like to ask, uh, for a motion to adjourn this public hearing to our, our next town board meeting on February eleventh.
So moved.
You have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, may I have a motion to open the public hearing on? Which one is that? It's the moratorium on battery energy storage systems.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Lino, would you like to get us started?
Yeah, I'm correct. This one is a continuation, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
So this one, again, this is a, uh, a proposed six-month moratorium on battery energy storage systems. So basically what we propose here is a six months pause in any type of BES application. So that we, the town, you know, with our consultants can study this more closely. I mean, we had public comment the last meeting with the fire chief. With respect to the safety of these types of facilities and this type of equipment. So we would like the time, you know, as the town and town staff to study this, determine, you know, where, if. You know, these would be appropriate in the town or part of the town and how it's zoned, bulk, all that. So we, we would recommend, again, a six-month moratorium, just to put a pause again, and on this. The county has commented and said that the moratorium will be told its requirements. So I would recommend that the board adopt this, you know, this is moratorium as a strategy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone for a public comment? No, is there anyone online?
No hands are raised.
Okay. So seeing that there are no further comments, I would like to ask for a motion to close the public hearing and leave. The record open until noon on Friday. What is the exact date?
Written comment?
And leave the, the record open for written comment.
Friday's the thirty-first.
Through noon, Friday, the thirty-first. Is that, um, Jill, is that reasonable for, for you guys?
That's fine.
Second. I mean, I'm sorry, someone.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, may I have a motion to reopen the public hearing on the moratorium on commercial solar arrays?
So moved.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Lino?
I'm up again. So again, a continuation for same reasons as the battery energy story, what this local law proposed to do is a six-month moratorium. To allow the town to further, um, look into freestanding ground mounted and solar energy collection and large scale solar collection systems. And large scale solar is defined as property consisted of tankers or more. Now, you have a solar code, you know, in your zoning already. However, what we would like to do, I think we need to further study that zoning. Possibly even changing some of the definitions that are in the zoning code. And even looking at, you know, more bulk and obviously the use table in terms of where we, these types of installations that will be appropriate in the town. So again, for the same reasons that we had for the prime moratorium, we're requesting a short, uh, six-month moratorium to study this. Um, again, but it's limited to freestanding and ground mounted as well as large scale solar. I know at the last public meeting, there were some comments about. You know, the, the freestanding solar, but in, in respectfully, I wouldn't keep that in this legislation. And the reason why is because some of these like freestanding panels can be large, depending where they're located and how they're faced and how they're, they're angled. They need to start neighbors, glare. These are things that you have to look at. So I, I wouldn't want to exclude that from this moratorium. That's why it's included. I mean, again, in a six-month period is not a long time to, to review this. So that's why I would recommend, I know the county did comment on a couple of the. The elements of the solar law, but I still believe that, again, this, we're talking about large scale solar and also these ground mounts. We talked about rooftop. This local law, this moratorium, if you have a home and wanna put solar on it, doesn't, that doesn't affect it. You can still do that. But if you wanna put a solar like array or a solar mount in your backyard, that's a little different, because that, that will apply. The county, uh, said also that the moratorium, uh, comports with the intent and purpose of a moratorium. They also suggested that the, the, we not include solar canopies over existing parking lots. Again, if it's ten acres or more of a parking lot, you may want to include that. I, again, I respectfully disagree with the county. I think we want to include it at least for this. Short six-month time period. And if there is an application for such and you want to have it go forward, there's a, there's a waiver provision in the moratorium for hardship. That every moratorium has to have. So again, I think it encompasses this moratorium and I think the county comments are. You know, I think we, we, we take care of it in this legislation. So again, we're asking for a six-month moratorium to study this from a zoning standpoint.
Okay, thank you, Lino. Would any, anyone, um. Do you want to wait until, well, just one second, if you could hold your question. I just wanna know if there's anyone from staff online who would like to. Make any other comments to introduce the, this public hearing. Or, or you can make your comments afterwards. No? Okay, Holly? Yes, go ahead.
We, we don't currently have any applications in process.
No, we do not.
Okay, thank you.
Lino, um, you referred to the two letters. I've got them here. We should be putting them in the record.
Correct, you should. Yep, and yeah, I could just note those, Jill, thank you for that. So the two letters we received, both dated January twenty-seventh from, uh, the county planning board. One having to do with the battery energy storage system and the other having to do with solar. And this is just part of the GML review that we have to do for local laws for zoning. So that's what this, these are the general GML, uh, letters that came in, again, from the county, from Bernard, uh, Thomas.
So we'll have the clerk make them part of the record.
Clark?
Yes, we'll have the town clerk make them.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Lino. Is there anyone who'd like to make a public comment?
Yes.
Welcome and just state your name and where you reside.
Thank you. My name is Michael Gerard. My wife and I have lived in Newcastle for thirty-eight years. I'm a professor at Columbia Law School where I teach courses on environmental law, energy law and climate regulation. I'm the founder and director of the Saban Center for Climate Change Law. And I'm the author of many articles and two books about renewable energy. I would like to oppose the proposed moratorium on, on ground mounted solar. Unlike battery, uh, storage systems, solar systems do not pose a safety hazard. Or do they have any other major negative environmental impacts? Uh, people may not realize it, but within eight miles of here is a ten acre, uh, ground mounted solar system. It's at the Swiss Re property. If you drive past one-twenty and you, uh, look to the right through the trees, you might be able to see it. But it's completely innocuous. What it does do is it allows the Swiss Re buildings to have most of their power from the sun rather than from fossil fuels. Most of the electricity that comes into, uh, Westchester comes from fossil, from natural gas-fired power plants. And the natural gas, since New York and fracking, uh, comes almost entirely from fracking in Pennsylvania. And so the lights that illuminate this room, uh, come from fracked gas in Pennsylvania. We are exporting the negative environmental impacts of our electricity consumption to residents in, uh, in Pennsylvania. Uh, the, uh, principal reason why, uh, some people oppose, um, uh, ground mounted solar is because of the trees. Uh, but, uh, there are studies showing that one acre of, uh, solar PV that replaces natural gas. Has a much greater effect on reducing greenhouse gases than does an acre of trees. Um, a study that we reported at Columbia, uh, shows that although there's a lot of variation among tree stands and, and density and. And age and lots of other things, uh, that an acre of, uh, solar PVs replacing natural gas. Has two hundred times the, uh, positive effect on greenhouse gas emissions as an acre of trees. And of course, there are places in Newcastle where, uh, these installations can be put without taking down any trees. Some taking the train station parking lot. The parking lot across from Susan Lawrence, the Whole Foods parking lot are all possibilities. Um, the draft resolution before you states. The town is very concerned with the detrimental effects of solar energy systems on the health, safety, welfare and quality of life of the residents. And citizens of Newcastle. As a resident and citizen of Newcastle, I don't believe that there is any factual basis for this statement. There is a lot of false information, uh, circulating about solar, a lot of it from, uh, social media and other sources. I'd like to introduce into the record, a, uh, report that my colleagues at the Saban Center for Climate Change Law. Uh, released a few months ago called rebutting thirty-three false claims against solar, wind and electric vehicles. Uh, the report and its four hundred and sixty-seven footnotes to the technical and scientific literature, uh, document this. And if I may, after I'm done with my statement, I'd like to pass around the report. Uh, New York State's Climate Leadership and Community Protection Act has a, uh, strong policy in favor of renewable energy. And just last month, the New York State Supreme Court appellate division invalidated an action by the town of Athens in Green County. Uh, denying a variance for a solar installation. In part on the grounds of its, uh, being contrary to the Climate Leadership and Community Protection Act policy. Uh, the proposed resolution is also in conflict with the town's own, uh, policies. The town's website, under the heading climate change, states, quote. "One of the goals of Newcastle's comprehensive plan is to reduce the town's carbon footprint, encourage climate change adaptation measures. Minimize energy demand and promote the use of alternative energy." Uh, continue, still quoting from the website. Uh, "The comprehensive plan establishes goals to update the climate action plan and follow new green, greenhouse gas emission reduction targets." It also directs the town to define and reach a specific percentage of municipal energy procured from renewable generation sources. And to identify potential sites for renewable energy installations on government-owned properties. The town zoning code, as, as you've heard, also provides for large-scale, uh, solar collection systems. It says they are permitted in all zoning districts and require a special use permit from the planning board. There are height setback and lot area restrictions here. Uh, a requirement for a landscape buffer, there's requirements for signs and fences. Additional requirements for other qualifications of installers and other safety measures. So if someone did want to build one of these things and tear down trees, it would still need a special permit. And so it would come before the planning board and the planning board could consider any special circumstances in that particular location. Um, all this is in section sixty dash four-ten L of the town zoning code. It was adopted in two thousand seventeen. Uh, this law provides adequate protections against any, uh, negative environmental impacts that a solar installation might have. A moratorium on, uh, solar installations is unnecessary. And it's contrary to both state policy and established town policy. Uh, and it would send a signal that the town doesn't care about climate change sufficiently to take any real action on it. At a time when we are seeing cl- uh, climate change worsen, fire, uh, wildfires. And, uh, heat waves and flooding and storms and lots of other kinds of, uh, negative impacts. And the absence of federal leadership means that it's all the more important for state and local governments to do everything they can to address climate change. In two thousand eight, the town of Newcastle proudly became the first climate smart community as declared by the. New York State Department of Environmental Conservation. I don't think that the town of Newcastle now wants to be known as the first municipality in Westchester County to impose a moratorium on solar installations. Um, I did not stand up to speak against the moratorium on battery storage facilities. The, as the fire chief said, battery storage facilities can pose a, uh, safety hazard because of fires. Uh, the, uh, solar installations do not have any such, uh, uh, danger. I, I think there is no need for a solar moratorium and it sends the wrong message. So I hope that you do not enact this moratorium. And with your permission, I'd like to. Enter into the record and pass out this report, thirty, rebutting thirty-three false claims about solar, wind and electric vehicles.
Thank you.
Thank you. I, I don't want to, to, to challenge your knowledge. You certainly know a lot more than I do in, in this, in this area, but I just wanted to make a couple of points.
Thank you.
No one, no one's denying it, meaning saying no. It, the moratorium is vastly different. And it's also, we wouldn't be the first to institute a, a moratorium on solar installations. It's very limited in its capacity. And as I'm trying to be a good law student, thinking out loud as you're, as you're going through some of the things you shared. It very well might be true, and I don't doubt it, that one acre, for example, of, of solar energy or solar systems. Would be more efficient in protecting against things like, like CO2 and, and, and the adverse impacts. But. What doesn't consider just in that example is what about the insects in the habitat and the squirrels and the birds and things like that? And the pollinators that get destroyed. So when we're comparing apples to apples, there's a bigger picture to look at here. Fortunately, as I understand it, we have nothing going on right now. There hasn't been any applications. And then specifically in our town, we're trying to undergo a study for the parking lot, for example, in our public land and figure what we want to do with it. So we wouldn't want to see installations. It may very well be that tomorrow, proverbially, whether that means tomorrow literally or, or, you know, months or a year down the road. That's a great place for it. I think it could very well be, because this town board and those before it do support or does support these applications. We're just trying to figure out the best way to handle it and I can't profess to be so versed in it that I could have the answer and that's why we're trying to find it. And no way am I challenging your knowledge and your experience at all. I'm just trying to think out loud that six months is not a denial. Six months is let's figure it out. Because your, your ideas might very well be the right ones. We just gotta figure out how to get there and do it the right way. And since there's nothing happening now and the biggest place being the parking lot is something we're studying. I think it, it's sort of no harm and, and I don't want anyone to think the message we're trying to send intentionally or accidentally. Is that we don't support what you just spoke to, which is better environmental policies going forward and leading by example. So.
Okay, thank you for your public comment.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, before we take any other comments, I would just like to put something into perspective. Today, at, at this public hearing, we're not trying to determine the benefits and advisability of installing solar arrays. And solar, solar systems. We are simply, um, addressing the issue of the six-month moratorium. Um, all of the benefits that we've just heard of are precisely the kind of testimony that we would be looking for. And during the six months and during that study. So the only question at hand here is whether we should have a six-month moratorium. Not whether solar installations are good or bad or anything in between. Those are comments we will take during the six-month period.
I just wanted to thank you for your distinction, uh, between solar energy and the lithium battery storage, because I, I. In our conversations, we do recognize that there is a significant difference there and we do acknowledge that. Solar seems to be quite safe, but to Jeremy and Vicky's point, we just, we need the six-month moratorium to make sure that the way we go about it. In this town is best for the community, not because we don't want it, not because we're not committed to doing everything that we can to pre- prevent. Uh, climate change from happening or, or mitigating the effects. Um, but I do appreciate you drawing this distinction between the solar and lithium battery and providing us with your expertise. Thank you for coming tonight.
Yeah, and in fact, we did, uh.
Number six actually addresses that issue I raised. Thank you.
Yeah, so, but in fact, uh, the distinction, the distinction was provided by the fact that there were two separate public hearings. So we, we understand. That distinction. So thank you for the very substantive comments and we would like to, um. Ask that you come back and provide them again when the time is right to study the substance of the issue. Okay. Any other public comments? On the audience? No? Okay, any public comments online? Any hands raised?
Sorry, Paul Iden again, the fire chief. I just would like to ask the town to use the six-month moratorium period. To look at the fire safety perspective as well. Now granted, a solar field is not as prone to a fire emergency. As a fossil fuel type facility, but they do happen. And as the industry. And as the industry is getting larger and larger, you're getting more demand for solar panels, more demand for infrastructure those panels are built upon. Not always necessarily built by the most reputable builders. So to make sure that Mr. DePaul and Bancroft have enough time to come up with a proper way to measure. Is this a proper installation? Is this installation poses any risk to the firefighters? Just goes hand in hand with a brush fire. If there happens to be a brush fire and you've got vegetation around these solar panels, how does the firefighter fight those fires? The solar panels are um always energized. There's no way to shut off a solar panel per se, so there are risks that are posed to first responders in combating fires. And if there is a battery energy storage system attached to a solar panel, a solar field, how are we going to make sure that that B E S S is housed in such a way that it's safe for people servicing the panels, um combating potential fires, et cetera, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry Vicky, I do wanna, I I'm trying to say Mr. Gerard, thank you so much, I was not being dismissive of you whatsoever.
Go ahead, yes.
And I hope you don't you don't think that for a moment. This is one of the points I raised about taking down the trees, you actually have something here to that point, number six, so I do really appreciate it, no way was I being dismissive, so thank you.
Okay. Um I see one hand raised, we have Laura Lenahan. Yeah, can you please unmute yourself?
Oh, yes, thanks for I I think I'm unmuted now.
Yes, we can hear you.
Um I um I I know this is not a Q and A.
I yeah, I I
Um but I'm unfamiliar with the process during which there's a contemplation of the issues um being addressed during the six month period. Um how can the public be aware and and potentially participate? You don't have to answer my question if you wanna send me to the town website and find an easy spot, the the solar panel, uh particularly in public loss, um is of particular interest to me.
Okay, it's a it's a good question. Um I imagine, uh Lino, do you want to?
I can answer briefly, yes, of the important way, I've done many moratorium and studied various legislation as a part of it.
Yeah. Yes.
But this is the time now where we internally as a town, our staff, consultants, start reviewing our legislation, how to make it better, how to improve it, as Mr. Gerard said. I'm I'm sure there are ways to improve it and I, you know, looking at it already, I'm sure there are ways that we can tweak it. But it's gonna allow us the opportunity to do that. And when we're ready to present the legislation that we feel addresses some of these concerns, it's gonna be presented before your board at a public hearing, the public's gonna come out, have another opportunity to review the legislation that we're proposing as a result of this moratorium. And so the my point is the public will have another opportunity to do that once we've done studying it internally in terms of what we believe would be a good, you know, in terms of the zoning criteria, bulk analysis, where we think this use is is best in town and and the scope of it after that six month period.
Right, so there'll be presentation, there'll be presentations?
To do that, presentation, yep.
And there will be a public hearing on the substantive issues, right now the public hearing is regarding the six month
Public hearing. Correct.
moratorium and the desirability for this six month pause.
Pause, right.
Um okay. Any other questions? Any questions online? Okay. So at this point, do we feel ready to close the public hearing and move on to our six month moratorium?
Yes.
Have you heard public comment?
So I'm moved, I'm moved, we have to adjourn it for
Yeah.
So so I I would like
For written comment, written comment.
A motion, a motion to close the public hearing and keep the record open until Friday
January thirty first.
January thirty first.
At noon.
Twenty twenty five, at noon. Um for public, for written comments.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Fine, okay.
Thank you, okay.
So we are up to the consent agenda. Uh Jill, do you wanna run us through it?
Sure. Quickly going through it, um about authorization to enter um in the Denny's Chapel Central School District for the use of s- uh school facilities for our twenty twenty five summer camp, where we will run through school. Autorization to rent the bathroom trailer, um which I can say uh station trailer for twenty twenty five summer camp. Autorization to solicit bids for twenty twenty five camp bus transportation services. Autorization to purchase a non-police vehicle. Autorization to produce the following capital projects. Twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen I T equipment upgrades, D B W truck wash facility project, D B W facility do uh fuel dispensing system purchase. Autorization to approve the letter to Westchester County regarding funds for the vacuum truck, that's the Mr. Putson. Autorization to use the own property, facility group. Autorization to approve the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty seven C A I tax mapping contract uh for the assessor. Autorization to accept the vehicle action results of D B W. Autorization to enter into consent and release agreement regarding uh clinical dam. And authorization to approve the stormwater maintenance and easement agreement for some time.
Hmm.
Um we further have retroactive payment of claims per check stated the seventeenth and the twenty fourth of January, twenty twenty five. We have an authorization to hire a deputy town controller, authorization to appoint a planning board alternate. I just didn't remember which we decided, yes, authorization.
Yes, yes, we
Yeah, we we need uh
Is that part of the consent agenda or is that a separate?
All good, yep, it's number four.
So we don't need the resolution, it's on the consent agenda.
Um these are proposed actions, so that they are, oh, I'm sorry, fine, good.
Yeah, it's not, hang on.
Got it, okay. It's not here, but Jill's gonna add it.
It's not on there.
It's number four.
Oh. Yep, okay.
Sorry, all good.
Oh, okay, I thought it was
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
I'm interrupt.
Oh, okay.
Alright.
I move to adopt the items one through thirteen listed on the consent agenda.
Wait, hang on a second, oh. Jill, were you done with the?
I'm done.
We were talking so.
No, no, all good.
Okay, good, sorry, go ahead, go ahead.
Alright, take two. I move to adopt the items one through thirteen as listed on the consent agenda.
So moved.
All in favor, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
Wanna do payment of? Yeah, go ahead, you do, you do payment of claim.
Ollie.
Oh, me, okay. I move to retroactively approve the payment of claims in the amount of three hundred and sixty four thousand, six hundred and twenty four dollars and ninety one cents listed on the summary A P check request and detailed voucher detail reports all dated January seventeenth, twenty twenty five. Checks were printed and distributed to each claimant listed on Friday, January seventeenth, so.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, can we keep going next?
Okay.
I move retroactively approve the payment of claims in the amount of three hundred fifty thousand, three hundred thirty dollars and sixty cents listed on the summary A P check request, uh check register and detailed voucher detail reports all dated January twenty fourth, twenty twenty five. Checks were printed and distributed to each claimant listed on Friday, January twenty fourth, twenty twenty five.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Go ahead, Jeremy.
Uh I move to authorize the hiring of Carl Schlegel for the position of deputy town controller within the controllers department at the annual salary not to exceed one hundred forty thousand dollars, the start date no later than March third of this year.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Welcome aboard.
Yes, welcome.
I I move to authorize employment of Jennifer Bergen as an alternate member of the planning board for one year term effective February first, twenty twenty five to December thirty first of this year.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Jen, you wanna take the last page?
I move to authorize the award of the procurement and installation of a rooftop solar P V system for the Chapel Quad Performing Arts Center Group to Rivertown Solar as per their proposal dated December thirteenth, twenty twenty four in which funding from NYSERTA for the clean energy community in the amount of one hundred and seventy, we assume that's supposed to be a comma,
Yeah.
thousand two hundred and forty dollars will be utilized.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Aye.
I move to adopt the following resolution. Now therefore be it resolved that the town has received the application and letter of support as well as the recommendation from the town historian for the honorary street naming of Poilin Drive to Mr. Lang's Way. Has held a public hearing regarding and has therefore met the required standards as per the honorary street naming policy. And be it further resolved that the town board of the town of Newcastle lovingly recommends the dedication of Mr. Lang's Way in recognition of Richard Lang and his exemplary citizenship and embodiment of community.
My second, uh all in favor?
Aye.
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 And I I just wanna say this will be a very special event and I'd like to um, you know, see if we could do a little ceremony around.
You can have a very large scissor.
Holy, it's so difficult for me to pronounce this uh, the name, maybe a scissor, but it's a sign.
Think you said it right.
Yeah, you're gonna need
So I don't know if it's a ribbon, scissor, but it it will be, it will be something, so I would like to to plan that with with the town.
No, I think it's an accessory.
It's good. And I hope there'll be sandwiches.
Yeah.
That's max. Jill, did you wanna sing?
No, 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 hey, and and thank you for Lauren for for drafting it so, the resident is so beautiful.
It is, oh, yeah, thank you for drafting it so beautifully, Lauren, yeah.
Thank you.
That's, yes. I move to authorize the town
No, 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 could just hold on, I apologize, so just hold on just a moment.
Oh, sorry.
I got my feet wet this weekend.
I got my feet wet this week.
Just the consent agenda, I know, that never happens.
Yeah.
Oh, alright, so we're gonna do it that way then.
At this end, yeah.
We would make the motion to the FUSL Chappaq?
Yeah.
Yeah, just make the motion to accept the waiver of the, okay, that's all we did, the the rental.
Um for both the rental and the fire chief's.
Yeah, rental. The fire chief, but in lieu of them paying for cleaning and
Right.
Yeah, so.
Why don't you do it?
Sorry, the, yeah, he's gonna do it, so, the
Yeah, I'll do it.
Okay.
I'll do it.
So we need a a resolution?
Just the waiver on Chappaq, we we just need a resolution.
Yeah, so just for Chappaq, yeah, I'll just do a quick resolution right now, so for Chappaq, my understanding is uh they're looking for a waiver of the both the the rental fee and the what else Jill, what what else was it, the fire? You said there was two?
The fire chiefs, yes, the fire chiefs.
The fire chiefs.
A waiver.
Yeah, so they would, to waive those two with the understanding that in lieu of that, they will be providing
Yeah.
cleaning services for the Chappaq and it was one of the services for staffing, right, so they're gonna be paying for that.
Staff.
Staff, staffing.
So it's not really a waiver.
It's not really a waiver, right, it's more of the, you're you're, they're paying for those services, so
A performance.
in lieu of paying, in in lieu of paying for the rentals and for the the fire, so that's the motion I would make. So the motion would be to not to authorize the
Rent.
The rent, the to waive, not to waive, but to allow the Chappaq to to use the facility without paying the rental fee or the the fire because they are paying for the cleanup and the the staffing of that, that event, in exchange, right, correct.
Ex- in exchange for services, they'll provide the service.
So so I I'll just move it.
Okay.
Yep, just move it, move it.
Yes.
Wait, I'm sorry, that's true for the fire chiefs as well?
Second.
The fire chiefs, the fire chiefs also.
They're the fire chiefs. Yeah, yeah, is that what they say?
I didn't notice. No, I don't think they were the same, was it not by the same?
Were they separate?
No, they were, they were separate requests, but it was for the same, I mean, one is
It's two.
Same thing.
For the same uh, for the same kind of waiver exchange of
Want two motions for that?
Oh, okay.
Two separate motions.
Is it necessary to do two motions?
But they're two separate event, two separate
They're two separate events, one involves, you know.
Right, so make two separate motions, so for the same or for the same type of, for the same request.
Alright then, yeah.
So I would say
Okay, may I have a motion to um
In exchange?
to approve the request
From Chappaq.
for
The use of Chappaq in exchange for
The use of Chappaq
Right.
by the Westchester County Association of Fire Fire Chiefs in exchange for um
Right.
in exchange for
The use of
uh the cost of services and staff.
Services, right, and staffing.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Maybe.
And may I have
Same motion for
the same motion for a performance from Frank Shiner in exchange for uh service, payment for services and staff
And then the staff, right.
and a don- uh donation of profits. To, well, not to the town, but to, to to the friends.
It's not, it's not Just, it wouldn't be the donation, it's just for the 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 rental fee.
Right. For our purposes, it will be the donation of
Right.
Um
Yeah, it's just, it's just for
Serv- services and staff.
Yeah, he's providing the cleaning services and staff, right, in lieu of paying for the rental fee and
For the facility. Correct, okay, correct.
Solely as to that, that
Solely as to that.
Yeah, to that last piece by Lino about the change, the services and the rental fee, so moved.
That's it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and we still have one resolution, number
Last one.
No, no, we
Number seven, number seven.
No, no, that that's there in error.
Oh, seven's not there, okay.
We don't need it.
Are we moving to adjourn or is it?
Uh, anything else?
Nope.
Okay, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.